I call the ordinance subcommittee meeting of Wednesday, March ninth. It started at six oh six. Looks like we're here and Tammy is not, so.
Okay.
That's the roll call. And I saw that we had an agenda from last time that he sent to Barbara and.
Minutes.
Yeah.
Direct minutes.
Minutes.
Sorry.
So, uh, maybe we can just approve those. Did you know, I have no problems with them.
Second.
And, okay, I'm in favor.
Alright.
Alright, so those are approved. We can just let Barbara know that we approved those. So, whether Tammy gets here or not, you know, I think one of the things I wanted to try to get done tonight was our statement. I don't think it's gonna be too difficult, so.
Excellent.
That's why I brought my computer, because I figured we could just write it. I was planning on doing a draft on my own, but that kinda got precluded with everything that I have going on. I was actually at a basketball game last night.
Oh, alright.
The boys were at the cage playing last night, the varsity boys, yeah, and they won by twenty.
By twenty.
So now they're in the finals against either Sabes or Berkshire team.
What time?
Uh, Saturday four.
Four o'clock at the cage.
At the cage, yep, so it's gonna be pretty cool. But that's why I didn't get this done.
Western Mass final.
Western Mass finals, yeah, that's why I didn't get this done.
Let me, let me, let me take the note, no, yeah.
Well, I wish we could announce it, but it's gonna be over before our next meeting.
The time this gets out, it'll be all over.
It will, so.
Saturday four o'clock.
Saturday four. Yeah, yeah, it's pretty cool.
It's exciting. Always exciting.
It is exciting. But anyway, I did not get to write it, that being said. So I figured we could just take a quick crack at this, maybe just hammer out this brainstorm. You know, we know what the committee does, so if we just bullet it out and then I'll format it and send it to Dan.
Okay.
Is that sound fair? And then after that, I was thinking we could just skim over that model sign ordinance now that we sent it back to planning. We're gonna have to have a joint meeting with them at some point, and I think it would make sense if we'd like this, or if we'd like pieces of this that we wanna try to incorporate. You know, maybe we make that suggestion to them and pass it forward. So I think it'd be good for us to review it, but, okay. So here's what I have so far. Tell me what you think, the purpose of the East Hampton ordinance subcommittee.
Excellent.
Excellent, right? Or maybe is to, well, you know, really, in a nutshell, we oversee and review legislation in the city of East Hampton. Cause most, you know, all the laws come through us, so zoning, um, all the ordinances. We do a lot with.
Oversee, review, and recommend.
Uh huh, oversee, review, and recommend, not oversee, review, and recommend. To, um.
To city council.
Yeah. Maybe.
And you could say, and make a recommendation rather than recommend.
Right.
Who knows, you might not recommend.
Right.
Just make a recommendation, recommendation may be, we'll do this.
Oversee, review, and.
Make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation. To the city council, period. Um, our, the purview. Of the committee.
Covers all.
Includes.
Includes all.
Um, and then maybe I'll just do like a nice little boom bullet point. So, uh, zoning ordinances.
All, uh, all legislative responsibilities of the council including.
Okay. Okay, including those.
Just to encompass.
Yes. Forgot an F over here. Purview of the committee. Uh, encompass. Legislative actions. Actions. Alright, hold on, so purview of the committee encompasses all legislative actions in the city? Or, I feel like maybe.
Before the council.
Before the council.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's.
That kinda cover?
Yeah.
I think so. Including but not limited to.
Mm-hmm.
All civic ordinances. Zoning ordinances. Zoning map. We would go so far as to say charter, the city charter.
Um, it's not, that's not really.
Why a charter review commission doesn't.
Right, and we didn't, the ordinance subcommittee didn't really do much with that. And I don't, cause I, I think it was, they developed, they had to create an ad hoc committee.
Right, the charter review.
Right.
Committee, or charter review commission really reviews the charter, so maybe.
Right. So city ordinances, zoning ordinance, um.
Zoning map.
Uh, yep. Working with planning board.
In conjunction with the planning board, we're required?
Um.
We're required, I'm just thinking.
Working.
You don't always.
When, when, yeah. When required.
Yeah.
We also do, uh, like, we have to approve state law, so approval of state statutes.
Um, consideration of all.
Right, uh, consideration.
The adoption of all, all, all state. Laws as they may apply to the community. Except, and maybe it was better to say acceptance.
So consideration of adopting state statutes, um, within the city.
It's really, yeah, it's really where the city has the option, the option to adopt, to, to, to accept.
The option to, yeah. So consideration of adopting state statutes when applicable.
Considerate, uh, the acceptance of state statutes.
Consider, consideration, the acceptance.
Consideration of states.
Acceptance of state, so consideration of acceptance of state statutes when applicable.
Right.
Sounds alright.
Yep.
Um, like, uh, state licenses and permits, like liquor licenses? Cause we do for over quota licenses.
Yeah, I think they gotta figure your ordinance subcommittee, but it could. Yeah, where else would it go?
Yeah, so, um, let me see, uh, adopting, uh, so, uh. City or, alright, so maybe we should, we can elaborate a little bit on city ordinances, you know, like city ordinance all include, you know, um, lo, you know, local. Noncriminal offenses and, um, you know, like urinating in public for, which is one of the things we.
I'm not sure we want.
That's one of the things we, like, that's one of the things we dealt with, right?
We may, we may be forced to deal with lots of things, but I'm not sure.
Were you on the, were you on the committee, were you on the committee when we had to do that? We had, it was.
I, I, I.
Public urination at the seven eleven?
I remember. No need to go any further.
Yeah, that was interesting. But we passed it, because it was, um, the only way they could do anything about it without the ordinance was, uh. Making a sex offender arrest him. So, alright, so we have consideration of state licenses and permits, um, when necessary. Right, so like when the fire chief comes to us and says, we need, we need to adopt this section of mass general law, um. That is the acceptance of state statutes, right? Of, you know what, we should say mass general law, acceptance of. Mass general law. How about this, consideration of the acceptance of mass general law and its statutes when applicable.
I like that.
Okay. Consideration of state licenses and permits when necessary. Uh, and should I say like, um, liquor license, over quota?
That's currently the rule.
Yeah.
The state's trying to eliminate that rule.
Right.
Create a different system.
Different system. Yeah. Um, alright, so what else do we do? We look, uh, we, we, through zoning ordinance, uh, work with public safety? Or, because, I mean, because zoning ordinance covers streets.
They do, but that really goes to.
I guess that's regular ordinances, like, that's, that's our normal ordinances, like.
About the public safety committee. Stop signs go to public safety committee.
We, they do.
And, and then.
Stop, but I don't know if they always do.
Traditionally, they always, one-way, one-way streets always went to public safety committee, and stop signs, speed limit issues.
Public safety.
Uh, really, it was under the purview of public safety.
Is that where, when I did, um, on Garfield app, when we were looking into that stop sign, remember that? It was a couple of years ago. I can't remember what committee that got sent to, I feel like it was my committee, maybe.
There are also, it, it, when you.
Well, maybe I was on public safety then.
Yeah, it might have been, yeah.
But, I, I mean, some of those things are in the, the city ordinance.
Well, they're all, they're all in city ordinances, but just because it's in the order.
Right, like, some of the, like, uh.
I think, I think public, public safety really had.
Payroll, or, um, pay, pay plan or, ordinance, like, we only do that when finances are too busy.
But that went to finance, right, to the government, it goes to finance.
That always goes to finance. Yeah.
Now, really, uh. The council can send to any committee, any, any piece of, 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 any, 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 uh, issue.
Exactly. Where, where they think it is appropriate.
Do not, it's appropriate and or there's new on the agenda.
Right.
To do the work, but this is just a general guideline.
Right.
I think.
I think so too, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what.
Well, we gotta say, this is a general guideline and subject to the rules of the council and the assignment by. The assignment by, uh, vote of council. Usually, I mean, everyone went to public safety committee.
Okay.
We can check, uh, see if she had a different recollection.
Right. Okay, so, let's see what we have so far and what else, see what we need to add. So the purpose of East Hampton ordinance subcommittee is to oversee, review, and make, um, recommendations to the city council. The purview of the committee encompasses all legislative actions before the council, including but not limited to city ordinances, zoning ordinance, zoning map. Working with planning board when required, consideration of acceptance of mass general law and its statutes when applicable, consideration of state licenses and permits when necessary. Uh, e, uh, easements and other zoning matters.
Easements are property, easements were property, that's really a property issue.
I feel like.
Easements, transfers of title always went to property.
Yes, property, I feel like.
You, you remember you were, we were on property together.
Is that what it was when we were doing it? Okay, cause I was like.
It was, it wasn't ordinance.
It's like, I know that we were working with the mill owners to get the easements over the bike path and, um, for the, for the mill project.
That's property.
I guess, I guess I've just been on those committees, so. Oh my goodness, alright, uh, what else? Is that everything?
It always can be amended, this is just a.
Right.
Really, I think the purpose is to kind of let new counselors become aware, in general, this is where the, the issues get assigned.
Know what it's, what it's all about. Right.
I don't, I don't see it as something that's set necessarily in the stone.
Should I say? Right. Okay, so, um, I'm trying to wrap it up here. The ordinance subcommittee works with all branches of the city government. To pass the most appropriate, pragmatic, and generally beneficial legislation for the people of East Hampton.
Hmm, maybe I should. I'm gonna read that one more.
Uh, the ordinance subcommittee works with all branches of the city government to pass the most appropriate, pragmatic, and generally beneficial legislation for the people of East Hampton. For, for example, when I say generally beneficial, like the solar ordinance that we did. You know, that had, that had a community benefit, so it was, it was generally beneficial. Because we were getting money and we're creating clean electricity and, you know, unused and unusable land is being utilized for something purposeful. But we can add more. I'm fine with that. We can add all sorts of stuff.
Do we need to say this?
No.
And read it, sometimes the, the decision-making is tough, sometimes it's not generally beneficial, but it's needed for the ci, but, but it's.
Right.
But it's important for the city, it could be something that you do.
But, but when you say gen, generally beneficial, that takes that into account.
Generally.
Because you have to, you have to do what is right, not necessarily.
Sometimes you have to do what's right and not what's generally beneficial.
What's, what's generally popular, but it might, it's gonna, if you do it, it's probably gonna be beneficial in some way.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, and if it's not, then you should be thinking about it.
Think about whether.
Like, do we really wanna do this if it's not beneficial? Alright, we can, we can put that part on hold.
Maybe now that we've, we've written this.
Yeah.
And discussed it orally.
Yes.
The public can be involved in how it's, I think it, would it be safe to, to email me that?
Yes.
Documents or make it included in the minutes?
Share with you right now. Yes. And then, you know what, if we decide that we wanna change anything before we send it to Dan, cause Dan's still gonna take this and review them, and then if he has feedback or whatever.
Right.
So.
So that's good.
Yeah, I'm sharing this with you right now. JP at, I have you at Realtor. I have easthampton.org.
East Hampton, okay, let's do that. Thank you.
Yes. I'm gonna call it statement.
Statement, okay.
Um, and.
That's a good first.
It's a good, it's a good start.
I think it just kind of lays out the parameters of what the committee does.
Right, we'll, I mean.
You wanna know.
We wanna change it, we can figure it out.
Right.
Um, so have you had a chance to look at this a little bit? In the, in the last two seconds?
You mean, you mean since the minute before the meeting?
Yes, that's, that's the, that's the time I was talking about.
I don't.
So here, let me, let me.
Good chance to look at it.
Alright, let me, let me, let's, let me, um, show you some of the things.
For, for the public, when, when we do, when we say what we're looking at.
Okay, so we are looking at the town of.
Is there a website?
There, uh, it's.
Weather address there?
It's a DocHub.
Anyone to go to?
So, yes, it's, uh, Cornelius, www.corneliusplanning.org. Uh, it's the town of Cornelius, North Carolina, their planning department. It's, uh, under chapter ten, sign regulations. Uh, and it starts off very similar to ours with an intent and a purpose. Uh, and then it talks about, um, allowed signs and whether they allow variances, which is another piece of our ordinance that we need to tighten up, cause we say with a special permit. Um, so that's something we need to look at, uh, it has prohibited signs. Uh, it talks about, it actually gives a, a definition of what a sign is. Uh, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty good, uh, definition. Um, talks about how many you can have, the area, the design, um, the height, and it gives, uh, so this is on page ten point two. Uh, it gives how they measure different signs, so it gives the schematic of how they measure it. So it's really clear how, how big a sign is gonna be. Uh, it talks about setback, uh, it talks about in relation to sidewalks and streets where signs should be, and it gives a pretty clear diagram.
Yeah, that, that's always a concern, in, in my work as in real estate, sometimes you, directional signs you put up for an open house or something.
Right.
Or, you always have to make sure that it's line of sight.
Absolutely.
And that's, I think, what you're referring to.
Yeah, yep.
Line of sight on the street corner to make sure there's no visual obstruction.
Right, and this does, it gives, uh, it gives.
For signs that may be placed, if, if just, it can't be placed there.
Play, you're right, it gives you an allowable, how, um, you know, what can be placed in those areas. Um, talks about illumination.
It is very clear, the description here, if, if folks go to this website and, and look at the model sign ordinance.
Yeah.
That description is really clear as to what a line of sight is.
Yes, it really is.
I've, I've seen others that aren't, I mean, it just, just lays it out with a graphic that.
It's really good.
You can really imagine yourself walking or driving down the street and knowing exactly how many feet, how long, what angle.
Right, and so they, they describe it as sight triangles, and, um, this is, uh, you know, and since this is a model ordinance, this is something that, you know, planners use and, um, you know, engineers. Uh, to make sure that these intersections are clear, so, and it, and it describes it really with good detail, I think. And so then you can see some of the regulations, and they talk about whether illumination and with this, they, they really give a, a clear definition of what one lumen is, um, and how they, how they measure it. Uh, it, it gives a illuminated sign of measurement for how, how much light it should emit. So that's pretty interesting. Now, what I, here's the thing. What the Supreme Court decision determined was that we cannot discriminate. The size of a sign, or the shape of a sign, or any other physical characteristic of a sign based on its content.
Based on its content.
Right.
Certainly you can, you, you could.
You can limit the size of signs in certain areas.
Size of signs, shape of signs.
Right.
Standardizing signs, they didn't. Rule on standardization of signs.
No.
Just. Just making distinctions based on the content.
Right, exactly.
Or content type.
Right, so we can't.
For example, uh, real estate sign versus a, a coffee shop sign, or a political sign, or.
Right, we can't. Exactly.
Eating establishment.
Right.
Okay, alright, so.
So, so that's, and you know what, I, I, I believe that this ordinance does not classify them by content. Um, it talks about wall signs, but.
Building mounted sandwich board, I think there is a section on real estate and for sale, but I don't.
Right. So.
We'd have to, yeah, I think you'd have to look at that.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that.
Okay, yeah.
So, you, uh, let me have you look at, this is an interesting page, um, ten point six.
Ten point six, okay.
And this is where they talk about the difference between primary and secondary signs, and it gives the, um, a really clear illustration.
Yes.
Of what is a primary sign and what is a secondary sign. And how many signs you can have, so.
So primarily, what I'm reading here for the public is that the primary sign would be like the overarching sign for a building.
The big one, yeah.
And then there could be various storefronts in the commercial section.
And they would, those would be secondary signs.
A sub would be a, uh. It would be a secondary sign.
Right.
There could be three storefronts under one, one, in one side of one building.
Right, and so, so anyway, uh.
Okay, yeah.
So when you go down and you look at, uh, wall signs as primary signage, it actually gives pictures, um, of primary, what these signs look like. So, some of them are, are lit, some of them are, you know, all different, cut out metal, normal signs. And they, they label everything as to what it is, which is kind of interesting.
Yeah, let me, let me try to follow that.
It's on ten point seven.
Ten point seven, okay.
Yeah.
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 Uh, you're commenting about that, talked about primary.
So, yeah, those are examples of, um, the types of, of pri, primary and secondary signs and what they look like. These are wall signs. Pretty, pretty, I mean, definitely different than our ordinance, let's.
Very different.
Let's put it that way.
Than our ordinance, uh.
Yeah. So then, I mean, if you keep just, if you just keep scrolling down, it goes through different types of secondary signs, like awning, secondary signs, uh, projecting blade signs, you know, like. Uh, you know, a store has a sign that's hanging vertically outside off of a pole.
Right.
Um, and those are both secondary signs, and it gives examples of what those look like, which is kind of cool. I gotta say, the examples they're using are pretty nice.
The, the examples here are very nice, they do allow for corporate logos.
Yeah. Yes, they do, like, there's a Starbucks. But remember, you can't, you can't discriminate based on content. So you, I mean, you, I don't think you, you would be able to say, like, you, if you, you can't put up this corporate logo on these signs.
Well, I wouldn't say corporate logo, but the, 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 the sign has to be, you could. Could you, and I'm not saying you should, but I'm just being, thinking about this. Let's say there was a section in town that you wanted to be, to develop and make it standard unto itself. For example, uh, let's say one of the mill buildings.
Right.
Would be developed, or a new building would be developed. Would you wanna standardize the signs within the mill building? And have all the color be the same? All the sizes of your main heading and the subheadings be the same?
Right.
The, the type of print be the same, the, the depth of the print, you know what I'm saying?
Right, 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 no, exactly.
Of the fancy signs that you see sometimes. UMass used to at one time have signs that were black with silver lettering.
Right, right, right.
For all, all through their entire campus.
Well, I think, there wouldn't be anything stopping from somebody doing that, like, I mean, for example, I know that a nominee.
I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, but it, it may be good for, for developing a, a, a section.
Sure, I mean, I would, I would argue that, that that level of decision would probably lay with the developer, so if, in his development, he wanted to have, you know, all the signs be standard and uniform, or if he wanted to be more eclectic. And look more like a downtown with everything is kind of, has its own feel, I think that's a, at least from my perspective, that's a decision that would be done by the developer. And we would just say, you can put on this, for this mill building, you can put, you know, this si, this size sign as your primary, you can have an off-site sign. With this many spaces based on how many units you have or whatever, and this is the size it's gonna fit in. You know, I think that's more, and then the developer, like, I think, you know, Mill one eighty, I think he's, he hasn't done it yet, but I think he's doing like beautiful, cut out metal signs, backlit, like, you know, but. That hasn't happened yet. But, I mean, you know, I think that's where the developer steps in, um. And, and we set those parameters, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna keep somebody from doing something just because I thought it should all look uniform. You know, if they were like, no, but I have this amazing idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea and we wanna do it.
Right.
And, and then if you don't have certain standards.
Right.
It just kind of goes.
Yeah, it can go, well, and that's, and that's why these, like, so if you look.
Very, uh, individually, the.
It could be a little, it could be splitter splatter.
Really. Yeah, really get to be a mess.
So, if you go down, if you look at, so you have, so where we were was, we were at, we were at those secondary signs, like the bladed one. Now, if you get on, there's window secondary signs, murals, which is kind of, you know, more of a, it's a bigger sign. Um, and again, it gives. Examples of those.
Awnings, murals.
Yep, and then, and then.
Windows, okay.
It even goes into, um, banner signs and, uh, special event signs. Building mounted lease signs? So, but, you know, and, so, and I don't think, like, so a building mounted lease sign. That's, is that basing the sign on its content, or could you put any sign up there? That size on the side of a building? Saying anything you want? See, that's the question here, because this one, like, if you look at building mounted temporary real estate.
Mm-hmm.
That seems pretty specific. Seems like they're talking about real estate signs. Seems like they're talking about real estate signs, so is that reg- making a sign regulated by its content?
I have to read, to read the, uh.
The Supreme Court decision?
Supreme Court decision.
Right, so.
If you really get a sense of that.
But now that you have this, I mean, I think, this can be, what I'll, here's what I'll do, I'll, I'll email Jessica and say, um, I'll, I'll email this to her.
Yeah.
And say, this is what we're reviewing, maybe we can, if everybody looks at it, we can. Talk about. The feasibility of doing something like this, or what we would need to do to fix ours, to make ours work. But. I just always thought this one had a really nice. Uh, flow to it and was pretty easily understood. They have, uh, if you roll, if you go down to, uh. Ten, section ten fifteen, they have, uh, s- sandwich board signs.
Uh, sandwich board, yes.
Yep, which we have in ours. And it's pretty similar.
One sandwich board, and for example, criteria, one sandwich board sign or A-frame sign per business.
Mm-hmm.
Sandwich board A-frame sign should not exceed eight square feet per sign face. Two faces, I presume.
Yeah.
Of eight square, from the way, eight square feet, sign should not impede normal pedestrian traffic or handicap accessibility. Did we say that in a longer way?
Yeah, we, um, it wasn't that much longer, I think we were just a little bit more clear about, like, making sure there was space for a wheelchair to get through, like, uh, we, we had a certain. Um, distance of width that needed to be maintained between the business and the sandwich board.
Signs should not be placed along the street frontage or at intersections of, sort of highways, uh, or, or, specific to there.
And it goes specific to the city.
Where allowed A-frame signs should be located within ten feet of the main entrance of the building and must be removed daily.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, do they talk about corner directionals?
Um.
Cause that always becomes an issue.
No, oh, you mean like, like, uh, temporary sandwich, traffic sandwich board?
No, well, what I'm thinking is, is the sandwich board signs, the A-frames that you see in North Hampton. To direct to other way, commercial, uh, commercial areas, if it's not on Main Street.
Right. Right, right.
Small tailor, or.
Right.
Sewing shop, or, uh. Some other business that's off on a side street.
Right. I think that would be, that would be, um.
I don't know if that's included.
I think that would be included, cause it doesn't say that you have to put it on your property.
It says it should be within ten feet of the main entrance of the building, it must be removed daily.
Oh, yeah, main entrance, yeah. So that maybe is a little restrictive.
Right.
Like, so that's one of the things that maybe we would go, refer back to our ordinance. Um, so then there's real estate signs, that's something we'd have to look into. Uh, non-commercial historic.
Yeah, that's really a type of sign, I don't know.
Yeah. Non, non-commercial historic, dedic- I don't know.
Dedicatory.
Yeah, dedicatory markers.
Dedicatory, yes.
Directional, school and civic, drive-through, through menu boards, wow.
Directional, school and civic only, so.
Yes.
A particular type of sign. But related to school and civic.
To schools.
So that's, is that content, or is?
Um, um, no, no, no.
I don't know, I think you'd have to read the case again.
You'd have to read it, yeah, because I think, I mean, that definitely makes sense.
Yeah.
Uh, stadium signs, farm product, campaign election signs, yard sale signs, again, this is just thorough. Prohibited signs. Huh. There's quite a few prohibited signs. Like, they do, well, one of the things that's interesting, they don't allow, um, lettering attached to awnings, like, it has to be painted on the awnings. Cause, and it gives some examples of like. Um, elevated.
What, what page are you on?
Uh, I'm on, I was just going through the prohibited ones, and I'm on section ten dash twenty.
Ten dash twenty.
Yeah.
And prohibited one, I'm sorry, we're.
It was, uh, number fifteen.
Number fifteen.
So, it was just interesting, like.
Any sign or form of lettering attached to, rather than printed on the awning.
Printed, yeah.
So. So they really, they want the awning to have.
Printing on it and not.
Yeah, so, okay, on the awning and not on above the awning, or attached to the awning.
Right.
That's it, that is interesting, uh, back to page nineteen for a second.
Yeah.
I thought it was interesting, number four on that page nineteen, where they say that no signs in any traffic right of way.
Train lights.
Cannot contain images of a stop sign.
Hmm.
Uh, or the shape of, or say, say the word stop.
Yes, yes, yeah.
That's an intere-.
Yeah.
You go out and it's a stop.
Um.
That's interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless it's part of, it's placed there by the public authority.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's an.
That is an interesting one.
Very interesting, yeah.
You wouldn't think of that, you know, I'm gonna put a stop sign at my fruit stand.
Well, stop here, right?
And then, stop.
Stop here, but if it looks like an actual stop sign, the concept of, you know, the multi, what is it, what's the shape of the, the stop sign?
An actual stop sign, yeah.
Six-sided, five-sided, three, six-sided, stop sign, or even a circular, the red stop.
Right.
Red sign, so that, that's interesting.
And it's, it's really interesting to see how far down these prohibited signs go, I mean, they're really are. Like, all cloth signs, all, like, banners, uh, feather banners, which, by the way, are.
What number are you on?
Um, I'm, I'm already down to twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay.
Yeah, it's, um, we have.
The feather banner, yeah.
We have that at McDonald's, they have one of those. And it's against our zoning law. But, uh, it's not enforced. Why, why is it, why do they have it, or?
Why, why is it, why is it, uh?
I don't know, I guess nobody, nobody finds it particularly offensive.
Why, why is it prohibited?
I don't know, it's, I, it's.
I, I, I don't, you know, if, if it's long, if it's not six feet long and.
To preserve, I think it's. And like flopping into the road.
Flop into the road.
Yeah.
Okay, so somebody puts up a few banners.
Yeah, I don't, I have no problem with it.
I don't, I don't know.
But, but it is interesting that that is in there.
Yes.
Um, I guess it, you could get to the point where there's so many of them, and it could be really ugly, and when they get old and tattered, you know?
Yes, I, but that would, should be, able to be controlled by.
So. We think the person who had the sign would not want a gross sign.
Well, you'd think, but I don't know.
You'd think, I don't know.
Yeah, there's always an exception, and it's what makes the rules, the rules.
Right. Yeah. So, and then the last two pages are basically, um, a. A way to find all different types of signs, so it's a kind of a quick, uh, way to find everything.
Just again, for anyone who's tuning in later, what we're looking at is the town of Cornelius, C O R N E L I U S, North Carolina, planning department's. Sign regulations, W W W dot Cornelius Planning dot org.
Yep.
Right?
Yep, and it's a model sign ordinance.
Model sign ordinance, twenty-two pages.
So, and this was something that we started looking at after we passed the first sign ordinance, I found it, uh, after it had passed, probably about a, a year later, so.
Way than ever, I, I wish we could to look at something.
So, I, like. Absolutely, absolutely, so I was thinking that I would, um, send that to Jessica, see what the, you know, so she can make a copy of it for the planning board, or at least disseminate that. Uh, and then we'll be in touch with her and we'll figure out a time to meet, so we can look at this further, so we can become Supreme Court compliant.
Complete Supreme Court compliant.
Yeah. Um, but, do you have any other business, do you wanna?
Uh, no, I hope we're, we're, we're pretty good.
Okay, cause, and we can review this on our own as well, so.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I'll re-mail it to Tammy, so she has, knows what we did tonight. Alright, do I have motion to adjourn?
So.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, we are done.